Linda, we're good?
Great. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, January 11th, 2021 School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
Inspector Raj.
Here.
Inspector Weber.
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
At seven present at 6:04.
Great. Tonight is our annual School Board Reorganization Meeting. We have a number of items on the agenda to get us set for the 2021 calendar year. First, we are super excited to celebrate with the official swearing in of Nikki Lallaberty to her second term and John, John, I didn't even ask how you say your last name.
Raj.
John Raj and Monica Weber for their first terms on the South St. Paul Public School Board. All three members were elected during the November 3rd, 2020 general election and will serve four years' terms that expire January of 2025. So Nikki, John, and Monica, it's an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for the equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you'll be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain the maximal maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we've created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skill and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Nikki Lallaberty, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me?
Of course.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of his state.
I, say that again.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of his state.
And of his state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Special School District Number Six.
Special School District Number Six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and my ability.
John Raj, having signed the acceptance of oath and of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of his state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and his state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Special School District Number Six.
Special School District Number Six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Monica Weber, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath oath of office after me? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of his state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of his state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Special School District Number Six.
Special School District Number Six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Nikki, John, and Monica. I know that we are all excited to serve and work alongside all of you. Thank you so much.
Yes, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Welcome to the new members.
Wonderful. So moving on to the rest of our agenda. Not as exciting as the first part. I'll ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as the minute from the special meetings that were held on December 7th, 22nd, and 29th of 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Bill.
So moved.
Thanks, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Raj.
Yes.
Inspector Weber.
Yes.
And Inspector Walker.
Yes.
At seven yays.
Motion carries. All right. The next order of business for our meeting is to select our officers. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair for the term commencing on the first business meeting in January tonight, 2021, to the first business meeting of January 2022.
I would like to nominate Chris Walker as chairman of our school board.
I second that.
Chris Walker is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of chair? Any other nominations for the office of chair?
Nope.
Last call for the other nominations for the office of chair. All right. Chris Walker is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, and I hereby declare him elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting in January 2021 to the first business meeting in January 2022. Congratulations, Chris. And guess what? This meeting is all yours.
All right. Well, thank you very much. You know, I'm honored to serve as the the school board chair. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on the board and with the administration and staff of the school district and really the entire community.
Whoa, who is the tree?
We had some interference there.
Just to remind you, for board members, if you're not keeping your mic, that'd be great.
Thanks. So it's gonna be a good year. I'm looking forward to it. So thank you again. We are now taking nominations for vice chair for a term commencing on the first business meeting tonight, January 2021, to the first business meeting in January 2020 or 2022. That's right. Are there nominations for vice chair? Well, I will nominate Linda Diaz. She has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Any other nominations for the office of vice chair? Last call for nominations for the office of vice chair. Okay, Linda Diaz is the only candidate nominated for the office of vice chair. So I hereby declare Linda Diaz elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting, January 2021, right now, to the first business meeting in January 2022.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Well, congratulations, Linda. We all look forward to working with you. We now are taking nominations for the board clerk position. Again, that's a term commencing the first business meeting, January 2021, tonight's meeting, to the first business meeting in January 2022. Do I have any nominations for board clerk?
I would like to nominate Nikki Lallaberty for board clerk.
Okay, Nikki Lallaberty has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of clerk? Any other nominations for the office of clerk? Last call for nominations for the office of clerk? Okay, Nikki Lallaberty is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk. I hereby declare her elected by acclamation for a term commencing on the first business meeting of January 2021 tonight, to the first business meeting in January 2022. Congratulations, Nikki.
Thank you.
We will now take nominations. The nominations are in order for the treasurer for a term commencing on the first business meeting, January 2021, to the first business meeting in January 2022. Are there any nominations for treasurer?
I nominate Wendy Felton for treasurer.
Wendy Felton has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Any other nominations for the office of treasurer? This is the last call for other nominations for the office of treasurer. All right. Wendy Felton is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk or treasurer. I hereby declare her elected by acclamation for a term commencing tonight to the first business meeting, January 2021, to the first meeting in January 2022. Congratulations, Wendy.
Thank you.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the school board meeting schedule for the 2021 calendar year. Do I have a motion to approve the 2021 board meeting schedule?
So moved.
Thank you, Nikki. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? All right, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton. Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Raj.
Yes.
Inspector Weber.
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
And Chair Walker.
Yes.
At seven yays.
Very good. The motion carries. Next item is for the approval of the school board committee and liaison assignments for the 2021 calendar year. Do I have a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you, Monica. And a second?
Second.
Second.
It was a toss-up. I didn't hear who that was. Thank you. I'd like to open this up for a discussion now. Do we have a?
I believe Inspector Diaz made that motion and not myself.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
What kind of discussion are we looking for?
Lisa is presenting a document that will spur us on here.
Okay.
Actually, I want to thank everyone for doing such a good job of letting me know promptly what your interests were as far as the committee assignments. Dave sent out that message and asked you to send your interests to me, and not that it's my job to assign them or decide who's on what committees, but just a way to accumulate all of them. And it kind of fell into place. It was, made a lot of sense. We've, we've got one spot that we're going to have to rectify tonight, and that is the finance committee. Typically, the board chair and the treasurer are automatically on the finance committee, and we had two other people that were interested in that, Monica and Nikki. Both were interested in the finance committee. Now, because of the requirement to not have a quorum at committee meetings, we can only have three. So we need to have a discussion of whether Nikki or Monica would be that third person on the finance committee. So I would like to open that up for a discussion and just see if anyone has any thoughts on how we can resolve that.
Chris, my thought is, how does Nikki feel about that committee? If we could hear from her?
Um. Well, to be honest, I'm, I'm using, I would like to use this year of 2021 to educate myself more regarding the financial end of the school district's business because next year I'd like to entertain the thought of being the board chair. So I think I need that background to prepare me for that.
Thanks, Nikki. I would also like to hear from Monica how she feels about stepping aside, knowing what the circumstances are.
I can be flexible if that's what people see is the, is the good, is the good of the board, just given I asked to be on the finance committee just because of my financial experience and what I do for a day job. But given, you know, other things, as I, as I know in other times, I don't have to be on a committee to gain information and be nosey. So if it's necessary, or if it's, you know, would aid the board, I can step aside, but I'm flexible.
I'm sorry, that's my phone. I'll step aside for a second here.
I guess I would like to add, as normally the treasurer does serve on the finance committee, I have served as treasurer before. So, and I have met with Aaron over numerous times because I just live right across the street, so I just run over. I would be willing to step off the finance committee if you would approve that so that Nikki and Monica could be on that committee. If that would be acceptable to anyone. Like I said, I have served as treasurer before. So I pretty much know all of the things that I, that I do, that I check on and that I watch. So that is an option too.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Could I just check? Thanks. I just want to make sure we're not stepping over any board policy possibly about having the board chair on finance committee. At least, are you, are you familiar with anything there that we need to be aware of?
I'm not aware of any policy or anything. I'd need to, I'll double check though here quickly.
Thanks. It's probably just been our past practice that treasurer's been on finance, so.
And if there's no, if there's no problem with having the treasurer not be on it, I'm confident that Wendy has, has got a lot of experience, a lot of tenure on the board and knows how to get that information. So I'd be comfortable having Nikki and Monica be a part of that group.
I can step aside too.
Yeah, so.
We need Wendy to be on that. I can step aside too.
I'm also flexible. I mean, however, you know, not to be Minnesota nice, but I really am flexible about not.
While, while we're double checking policy, go ahead. Did you find that, Lisa?
I didn't. I was just gonna say, if you want to just maybe move on to policy or some of the other ones, we can come back to the finance.
Sure. Sure. Thanks. Policy, we had two people come forward, Bill and John. So actually, we still need a third person for that committee. Is there interest from anyone as far as that goes?
Not to put you on the spot, Monica, but when I started two years ago, it was recommended to me to be a part of that, that committee. I'm so glad I was. I've learned so much. Really, the, the administration, you know, takes charge. They're the ones who are redoing all the policies and they come to us for approval. But I learned so much. They do such a, such a great job of updating. So if it's something you're, you'd like to do, I'd really recommend it as, as somebody new. Not to put you on the spot.
No, I mean, I'm flexible in either, in either arrangement.
You could do both. If it works out, you could do both committees.
Again, whatever, whatever's most needed for the board.
Well, may I throw out a possibility? The Aaron Bushburger, and through our requests over the years, has presented more and more of the financial materials to the overall board at the board meetings. So you will receive a lot of the financial information from Aaron, whether or not you're on the, the finance committee. I think since Monica, you have, are seemingly so flexible, perhaps we could put Nikki on the finance committee with, with Wendy and have you take over policy, knowing that you have this interest in finance. You'll be getting a lot of information from Aaron, and then we can touch base throughout the year and see if you're comfortable with the level of, of information you're getting. And if, if not, we can tweak this. I mean, all of these committee assignments are, are not necessarily set in stone. You know, we can change them throughout the year as people's wishes and interests become more clear. Does that sound like a possibility to, to have you be on the policy committee instead of the finance committee?
That works. It, to make, to move things along, you know, we can always revisit this at our next organizing meeting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. That's, I would make that a point for sure that none of this is necessarily not subject to change. You know, we can talk through it, but for the purposes of tonight, if everyone is okay with that, I would thank Monica for being flexible and we'll keep talking about it throughout the year. Does that sound good to everyone? Are there any?
You have my respect.
Yeah.
Chris, for the minutes, can I just confirm? You said Nikki will stay on or go on finance and Monica on policy? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Everyone else is understanding too?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Monica. We can talk about this more and, but I appreciate your flexibility. The Community Engagement Public Relations Committee has, it's kind of a hold, and we can blame the pandemic for that. Right now, Nikki and Wendy were the two that came forward. They were on it last year. We would need a third person for that committee, but off the top of my head, I don't really see that committee being able to do much for the next six months. I mean, that's getting out into the community and having events and putting a face, more of a face on the district, and I just don't see that that's going to be something that we'll be doing much with for the next six months. Does that sound?
Yeah, I think that's true.
My thought is, we'll just leave that with the two names now, and then when that becomes more active, we'll have a discussion at the board level and find a third member to join the committee.
Okay.
And I would entertain it. I was on it with Nikki and Wendy, and I, I enjoyed my time. It was probably one of the most fulfilling committees I've ever been a part of professionally. I, I'd taken on Equity Alliance or had expressed interest in Equity Alliance and so wanted to open, open it up to somebody else, but if, if nobody's interested, I'll gladly join those ladies again.
Okay.
John, would you be interested in being on that committee?
I'd already sort of discussed an opportunity potentially with Linda. I mean, I'm open to serve. But I think we sort of wait until we see how that committee can come into action.
Okay.
Sounds good. So we will revisit that committee, knowing that Linda has shown an interest. But down the road, when it becomes more apparent that the committee will start meeting and, and planning things, we can and talk about it and make sure that's where we want to go. Very good there. The Superintendent Executive Committee is usually the chair and the vice chair and the treasurer, so that's who it would be again, coming up. So it'd be myself, Linda, and Wendy. The other ones pretty much fell into place. AMSD, Monica showed an interest in that. And that, and it's really true of Equity Alliance too. We will have one official representative. However, it's, it's open, especially AMSD. They have a monthly meeting and any one of the board members is welcome to attend. So while we'll put Monica as the figurehead, the official name, everyone is certainly welcome to become a part of the AMSD. Central Square, nobody really came forward on that, and that's probably on its way out anyway, so we are asking Nikki by virtue of putting her name on here to just kind of run that out until that, that committee dissolves later on. Is that okay, Nikki?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
Good, good. Community Ed, Linda expressed an interest in that, so she's on there. Equity Alliance, last, at the end of Jeff's term in December, he introduced Linda as the new representative for our school district. John also expressed an interest, and they've, again, I don't see any problem in having Linda be the official name, John acting as the, the backup, if you will, the alternate. My understanding that that's not a problem with Equity Alliance, so we'll go with that, Linda, as being the official name, John as the alternate, but knowing that anybody that wants to participate in that is certainly welcome. School District 917, Wendy has been, you were officially put in that position at 917, were you not? Or is?
Yes, 917 district, it is considered a term position. I am in a three-year term position down at Rosemont at the Votech, which started this past summer, so I have another two and a half years to serve on that board.
Okay, so it's not so much you being a representative of us, you are actually on the board now and would take some action to replace you, so. So that one's yours. so that one's yours, which, which is fine. And then I don't see anymore on the, the list. What's? Lisa, can you tell me what's next after the nine seventeen?
With the high school league, Chris.
High school league.
And the open foundation.
Yeah. So the high school league is, is not, there's not a whole lot of action with that. Typically it's the uh, board chair that takes that on. So I will do that unless anybody uh, is, is interested in such a thing. Um, the Ed Foundation, Wendy was the one person that said she was interested in that and that fits well because she's been doing that for a while. So we have her name on that as well. And then the open foundation told us that we really didn't need to have an assigned representative. Christie Hood, who was previously on the school board, is on the uh, open foundation board and has volunteered to share information with us as needed. So we just put her name in there that uh, she will be working with us to supply all of the information that we need. So, so that is the committee assignments. Is that uh, sound good to everyone? Are there any other thoughts or comments or concerns?
Sounds good.
Okay. Well, once again, I, I thank Monica. She was the one that uh, ended up having to shift a little from her uh, uh, the, the wishes that she sent to me and, and uh, I appreciate her willingness to do so. So any other further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask Lisa to uh, state the committee assignments and call the roll.
Uh, finance committee, we've got Chris Walker, Wendy Felton and Nikki Lallaberty. Policy committee would be Bill Arndt, John Roche and Monica Weber. Public relations, community engagement would be Nikki Lallaberty and Wendy Felton. Our superintendent executive committee would be Chris Walker, Linda Diaz and Wendy Felton. AMSD is Monica Weber. Central Square, Nikki Lallaberty. Community Ed, Linda Diaz. Equity Alliance is Linda Diaz with John Roche being the alternate. Intermediate nine seventeen, Wendy Felton. Minnesota State High School League, Chris Walker. South St. Paul Educational Foundation is Wendy Felton. And the open foundation will be Christie Hood. With that, um, I'll call roll. Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz? Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you. Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And the motion carries. Thank you all for working through that with us and for all the input that you uh, you gave. Again, that was not something where I was going to make the decision on, on who was going to be where that we needed to discuss it. But I appreciate the, the information that you gave over the weekend. So we could at least have a starting point and for your flexibility tonight and getting everything uh, all set and in place. We're in a good place now. So we'll move on to our next item, which is to approve the delegation of the treasurer's day-to-day duties to the finance director and the clerk's day-to-day duties to the administrative assistant to the superintendent and the school board. Is there a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'll ask Lisa to call the roll.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And the motion carries. Uh, now looking for a motion to authorize the finance director and assistant business manager to make electronic fund transfers. Uh, do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And the motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is designated Bremer Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo and the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus as the depositories for school funds. Is there a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can I ask, can I ask why we use three different banks?
Uh, absolutely. You can ask. I don't know that we will have the answer.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah. So it depends on uh, we have different uh, accounts for different purposes. So um, like the, the school district liquid asset fund is for our day-to-day operations. Uh, Wells Fargo, uh, we have assets in trust uh, for our post-retirement benefits. So those are in a completely different account and different trust. Um, and then US Bank, we actually have used for some of our construction proceeds. For uh, more recently for the South St. Paul Education Center. So different, different accounts for different purposes.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Aaron. Um, I will also note that I am abstaining from this uh, roll call because I am an employee of Wells Fargo. Uh, the position I hold has no connection whatsoever with our accounts there, but I just uh, to avoid a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest, I will abstain from the vote tonight. Is there any other discussion? Very good. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yep.
And Chair Walker?
I will abstain.
Thank you. That's six yays.
And the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to authorize the finance director to invest excess funds in accordance with Minnesota statute one eighteen A. Do I have motion to uh, move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
See.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
Okay, the motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is designated Rupp Anderson Squires and Walzberger, Newton Flynn and Deans and the district nine seventeen legal services as the legal counsel for the district and individuals authorized to contact following approval from the superintendent's office. Is there a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
That motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda is designated Pioneer Press as the official newspaper of the school district for the twenty twenty-one calendar year. Is there a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche? Inspector Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is authorizing continued use of facsimile signatures uh, of the board officers on all check warrants issued by the school district. Is there a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And the motion carries. The last item for the reorganization portion of our agenda is adopting Robert's Rules of Order. Do I have a motion to move this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
And that motion carries. So those are all the, the organization items that we do at the first meeting of every year. Um, most of them are required that we uh, we go through those by the state law. So that's why we have uh, take the time to do all of that. And I certainly thank Lisa for uh, going through all those roll calls. That's uh, I think we determined um, that that's a record because the, typically they're voice votes, but because of the uh, virtual meeting, we need to do roll call votes. So there's never been a meeting where we had to do so many. So she's the record holder. So I thank her. Just the kind of record you want to have, I'm sure. Um, so that actually concludes the reorganization part of our meeting. Uh, we'll be moving into our regular business portion now. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include the financial claims and bills payable and the staffing as presented. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yays.
Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, we have.
Chair Walker?
I'm sorry.
Chair Walker. Um, if I could interrupt, we, can we go back up to the report section of the agenda, please?
Yes.
And Chris, I can lead it off with our school learning model update?
Uh, please do.
All right. So uh, it was about December sixteenth that our governor made a declaration that early learning programs in elementary schools that might need to adhere to our county data previous guidance. And that uh, that wouldn't be the sole guide for determining learning models. So uh, we continue to learn more about year nineteen and one of the things that uh, state's reporting is that because young people are less susceptible to serious complications from COVID, preschool and elementary schools could begin transitioning to a full in-person learning model as long as they meet presented guidelines. So there's a number of guidelines that we need to adhere to. So uh, our leadership team uh, began working through the many new guidelines from the state. And we had recommended that we safely transition preschool and elementary grades back into full in-person learning models. So uh, in following the state guidance, allow three grade levels to transition at one time. And so we're going to follow the following calendar uh, as follows. Uh, beginning Monday, February first, we are going to transition pre-K through grade two. And students at that point will begin full in-person learning. So we all, always will be allowing our students to be in distance learning for families that choose that. Uh, but February first, pre-K through grade two will begin full in-person. Two weeks later, grades three through five will remain uh, will transition uh, on February sixteenth. As you can see on the screen. And then we have notified all of our grades six through twelve, our secondary students, that on February fifth, we're going to notify you that um, what our learning model plans are and give you an update on February fifth. We continue to watch the data. We watch it on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. We continue to follow the fourteen-day rolling average from the county. And are still basing our secondary decisions off of that model. So just a reminder, for pre-K through grade two, your return is on February first that month. Grades three through five will wait two more weeks until February sixteenth. And then on February sixteenth, grades three through five will be returning. Uh, so we'll have any family that is choosing to send their child back to elementary school uh, for the full in-person model could return um, uh, fully by February sixteenth. So grades three through five return February sixteenth. So we will continue to work with our staff and team. Uh, one thing that we are implementing with state guidance, also at the bottom of the screen, we can see January twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. Uh, we are also going to have no school, the twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth for all early learning and elementary students. We're going to use this time to prepare our staff uh, for a safe staff return as well and preparing for a safe student return to our school. And we are going to use that time to prepare and also for professional development for our team here, all of our staff in the district. Uh, the good news for all students is it doesn't change the last day of school, which remains June tenth, twenty twenty-one. So uh, that is our update for tonight, just about learning model. You know, we wanted to make sure that uh, we communicate not only with the board, but also with our greater community. Um, and that is our learning model update for elementary as of tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Web. Um, Lisa, I seem to have that out of order. So I'm just want to clarify what's next. I, I'm showing the policy section is the next item. Is that your expectation as well?
Um, actually, we're going to go into a school board meeting transition plan, um, discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll do a public listening session update, um, and then move into policy. So my apologies if that is out of order on your script.
We're good. So Dr. Webb, are you, you can take the-
I am ready to roll.
All right. Take it away.
Yeah. So, uh, in your packet, we have our school board meeting transition. So we've used kind of a dial model where we have a one to five, one being a fully distance, uh, as a school board with our meetings to five being kind of a full in-person for our meetings. Uh, tonight, if I could direct your attention to the hybrid model, which we were in previously, as our elementary schools, uh, return February 1st, uh, I am looking to return to a hybrid model for our school board meetings, uh, which allows for us to maintain the 6:00 PM time slot to be on air with the community. So it has no disruption in our community presentation time. We maintain six o'clock for our regular business meeting. However, the, the hour beforehand, uh, we would start at five o'clock for our committee of, committee of the whole, our business meeting. And, uh, we would limit, uh, yes, uh, a, a number of 12 audience members for both 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM members. And it would allow for, uh, our staff here to attend in person or virtual also. This isn't new to the board. It's, uh, again, our phase three, our hybrid session. And, uh, we want to always keep, uh, all of our regular guidance and parameters. So we have, uh, some of our regular logistics include making sure that, um, we're still flipping presentations from a management team perspective whenever possible. Uh, that we are continuing to make sure that anybody coming in is doing the daily health screening, uh, which is important day to day still here. We want to make sure that if any school board member is feeling ill, they can attend virtually if need be. And, uh, we still will require face coverings for everyone on site. So our partitions are still up, uh, face coverings are required. And, uh, we would have our, uh, traditional seating chart as well. So just a reminder about some of those. So that's what I'm, uh, recommending tonight. And I just want to open it up for discussion.
So, excuse me. So we would not be meeting at five o'clock in the district office building?
Correct. Everything would be in the same location.
And is there a date that you're proposing this by? I might, I must have missed it.
Yes. So the elementary schools come back February 1st.
Okay, yeah.
So we, we wouldn't have our first board meeting until two weeks later in February. So it'd be mid-February and the end of February.
Okay.
Great. Any other discussion or thoughts or?
Yeah, I just want to point out that this will be all subject to change. Once we start, uh, getting vaccinations, um, as I understand it, we'll be carrying vaccination cards, which will exempt us from masks, but it doesn't mean we have to be exempted from masks. So, um, just keep your minds open to what could be by the middle of February. And be prepared to change.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts? If not, we'll thank Dr. Webb. And Lisa, I apologize. I seem to have misplaced the, uh, report section here. There was one more item that we were going to cover in reports.
Uh, just the public listening session update, which there are none.
Yes. So as it has been for several months now, the, the public listening session is still something that's available to the public. Um, the bullet points of how to, uh, go about accomplishing that are out on our, our website, but there were no requests for anyone to be heard tonight. So we'll, uh, we'll move on to, uh, our policy section. Uh, as a point of reference, school district policy number 208 requires policies under review to be placed on two consecutive school board meeting agendas, uh, for the review and comment by board members or staff or community members. And then on the third, the subsequent meeting after the two meetings that it's on the agenda, the policies will go before the school board for the approval. Uh, the policy does also state that in the case of an emergency, a new or modified policy may be adopted by a majority vote of the quorum of the school board. And through the guidance from the state, uh, the administration is bringing the revised COVID-19 face covering policy before the school board for approval under this emergency option, meaning if it passes, it will become effective tonight. So do I have a motion for that approval under the, uh, emergency option?
So moved.
Thank you. And any, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just share that our, our students and staff have been great about wearing masks. Uh, and just, uh, you know, the recent change that you see in the policy is, uh, regarding activities. And so we wanted to get this, uh, the mask update then, but, uh, our, our staff and students have been, uh, outstanding there. So just a kudos to them.
Excellent. That's so good to hear. Any other discussion?
Um, I noticed that both Nikki and Chad have their hands raised. I, is there something they want to interject at this time?
Nope, that was a boo-boo.
Okay. And Chad?
Yeah, not me either, Bill. My, my mistake.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good catch, Bill. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing that, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Very good. Motion carries. Uh, now moving into the business uh, item section of our meeting. We have two business items tonight. The first one is the approval of the 2022-23 calendar guiding change document. Do I have a motion for its approval?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Chad Schmidt, would you like to share some information on the calendar guiding change document for the 2022-23 school year that's up before us?
I sure would. Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair Walker and Superintendent Webb, board members and community of South St. Paul. My name is Chad Schmidt and I'm the Director of Learning for our special school district. And, uh, what I'm coming, uh, to the board tonight is to ask for your approval uh, of the guiding change document that will, uh, govern the development of a 2020-22-23 school year calendar. So I also, uh, recognizing that we have two new board members that are beginning tonight. Congratulations, uh, Ms. Weber and Mr. Raj. Uh, I, I want to move through this in, in a bit of a, uh, deliberate way so that you understand what's here. So again, ultimately I'm asking for an approval of the document. Uh, the document is designed to set the parameters for the development of a calendar that then when it comes back to this board, um, as long as it stays within those parameters, you are in position to accept and approve, uh, that calendar when it comes back. So, so this, uh, guiding change document, um, is, uh, setting the parameters and it's got three main areas to it. The first one is the results. That's that left-hand panel. And so, um, by you approving this guiding change document, you're saying to us, uh, develop a calendar that meets these outcomes. And so by, uh, accepting that, what I'm telling you is I'll come back to you in about six weeks or eight weeks with a calendar that is directed at these results. So the results are, um, listed there and I won't read through every single one of them, but some important points uh, that we have a consistent, uh, start day and a consistent end day for all of our schools, meaning that one school's not going to start on a different day than a different school. Uh, we have a minimum of 170 student contact days and 185 teacher contract days that, uh, we will prioritize our communication and partnership and collaboration with our families. Uh, student family connections, also known as parent-teacher conferences, uh, that we will make sure we've got collaborative learning opportunities spread throughout the school year so that as our teachers continue to, uh, learn and adapt and, uh, change their practices, that it's not all bunched up at potentially the beginning of the year or the end of the year, but that it's spread throughout. That we will, uh, try to maximize instructional days earlier in the school year. And, um, and ultimately we'll have at least two extra days in case of emergency closings. So it's my hope that at some point in the near future, we can eliminate that line number, um, number seven. Uh, because we've, th- those have been there because of snow days. Now, over the last, uh, two years, we have learned how to teach in, uh, virtual and remote ways. And so this need for closing school for a closed day, uh, might not be the same as it has historically been. So just right, a long future orientation. All right. Um, the current reality is just a recognition of, uh, our strategic plan and the focus in the district as well as, uh, what has been true for us over the past, uh, few years. So a recognition of that context. And then the, uh, third column is the unacceptable means column, which says that we can't violate any of those. So, so by your approval tonight of this guiding change document, what you're assured is that a calendar will come back to you that will stay within these parameters. Uh, and that therefore, uh, would be something, uh, able for you to approve because you've set these parameters for us to work within. Uh, the other thing I'll make a note of is we are trying to stay an extra school year out ahead. So last year, the board approved two calendars, both the one we're working under right now, the night, uh, the 2021 calendar and also the 21-22 calendar. And so by creating this 22-23 calendar, we are allowing our families and our, uh, school community to know that this is the plan two years out. Uh, allowing them to, to make whatever kinds of decisions they need to make as a, as a family. So that is, uh, my brief presentation around, uh, the use of this guiding change document to guide development of a calendar and my request for approval. Are there any questions? All right.
One quick question. Um, in terms of family connections, um, we have found that this year we're doing more and more conferences virtually, um, which I think is sometimes almost more accessible to families. Is that something that, you know, post-pandemic, we may continue? Is that something we will do away with or will we do a combination? Are we looking at that going forward?
Uh, thank you, John. That's a good question. Um, I, so, um, number one, I'm going to back, go backwards a little bit. Uh, conferences had been scheduled on, um, during the middle of the day. You may, may know or remember this, uh, that, that we might have a day off of school for students so that we had parent-teacher conferences. In the last two years, we've shifted to more of these evening and office hour kinds of conferences that you just described. And because of the pandemic, uh, we, tho- those have been conducted virtually. And so I would fully expect that our schools would continue to use that as an option. Um, in addition to providing some face-to-face opportunity for the, uh, it, when it's safe for students and families to connect in that way. So I think it's a both and scenario rather than an either or scenario.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chad or any other discussion at all regarding the, the guiding change documents? All right. If not, thank you very much, Chad. Um, as always, that's a tremendous amount of work. Uh, we appreciate everything that you put into it and the number of people that you need to draw into the process and, uh, and then, you know, what we come up with every year. So again, thank you for all your efforts on that.
You're welcome.
Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
And the motion carries. Thank you all. Our second item in the business section is for, uh, the approval to schedule a special meeting on Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, at 5:00 PM. The meeting will be to conduct a closed session per the open meeting law. That's Minnesota statute 13D point 03 for a labor negotiations update. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on scheduling this meeting? All right, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yeas?
Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, now on to our reports and informational items. Where we'll start was Superintendent Webb and, and give him and the school board members a chance to share updates. Uh, Superintendent Webb, we'll start with you. Do you have more to present?
Believe it or not, you still have to listen to me one more time. So we have a superintendent's update for tonight and we have some great photos, uh, from our, from around the district and, uh, our communications coordinator, Dan Childs. So, uh, you'll get a, some inside view of our school district. And it's the best that we can do, uh, in a distance learning model here. So we are changing learning models. Just a reminder again, day one, February 1st will be for pre-K through grade two. And February 16th will be for grades three through five. And we will remind middle and high school families on February 5th about their update as well. So when any lunch pickups come through, uh, we will remind all families to come to the secondary for lunch pickup if you're in distance learning. Next, we have a number of highlights from across our district. So we have some fun photos of the kids during winter break and a variety of activities. So we'll just scroll these, uh, and, uh, it's just great to see kids out in the, uh, the snow and sledding and uh, on the Jefferson Hill and whatnot. So, um, drinks are open, sliding hills are open. So, um, just a great time of year. Uh, you can see that our activities, uh, and athletics teams and programs are back. You can also see that they're all masked up. So just, uh, we're trying to continue to be safe and provide great opportunities for our students at the same time. Here's a shot inside, uh, and we're getting ready for our one act festival. Uh, uh, we took these just, uh, believe, believe this afternoon. So we have shows January 15th and Saturday, January 16th, 7:00 PM and 2:00 PM respectively. So, uh, we are going to stream those opportunities for our community. And it's not- and it's not too early to get your tickets. Next. Some more good news, we've already received a Safe Routes to School grant. We got an additional grant just last week, which will boost our funding and allow us to expand our own adaptive bike loop, so we're excited about that. Just a shout out to everybody that did the, this year's Hybrid Walk-a-Thon. They raised 19,000, which comes right back into classrooms across the district. We are continuing to work with families on our MYP grading change that shifts our grading methods to a one-to-eight scale. And we've been communicating with our middle school families throughout the year about that. We have a couple of great pictures from the Lincoln Center Principal Praise Award. And just a shout out to each of our students from Lincoln Center. And we have a number of calendar events. We have four dates listed that you can add on to your calendar. And then following this slide is our usual tree to find all of our minutes and meeting materials for this meeting. We'll go back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. So many smiling faces in those pictures, those are really fun. We always, always enjoy that section of the meeting. Well, now move on to board member updates. We'll start with Inspector Felton.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with the Educational Foundation. We recently received our annual report, and they did a great job of, of printing it out and a very good explanation as to far as with, with our virtual events, like Dr. Webb just mentioned, the virtual Walk-a-Thon. We weren't able to have our annual gala at the country club this past summer, but they, people were very, very generous in their donation, so we thank them. And as we are into the, the new 2021 year, we are starting to work on already, starting to get the scholarship banquet information out to our donors. They're preparing the information to give to students so that they can apply for scholarships soon, which normally takes place towards the end of February, beginning of March. And that banquet, which was held virtually last year, which is in the very beginning of May. So there's a lot going on over at the Foundation Office. We thank Karen, Carrie, and Sharon for everything that they do there. And then regarding Intermediate 917, we are starting the process now of a new superintendent search. When I think back over, this is my fifth time I've gone through a superintendent search with both districts between South St. Paul and 917. So it is, it is a lengthy process. Our Personnel Committee has started doing search firm research. So we, we are having another board work session next week to start going over different search firms that we can get started, getting a new superintendent, as Mr. Zulik has entered his resignation for June 30th of this year. So there's been a lot of things going on that way and just plenty to keep us busy, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy, Inspector Aaron?
Yeah, Chris, I would like to thank both Monica, John, and Nikki for filing for school board and becoming elected. Congratulations, and I look forward to meeting you. And Nikki, I look forward to the day I can slip a York Peppermint Patty between our spaces.
You know what, I can hardly wait. And could you not be so stingy and give me two or three?
How about a bag?
I'll take it.
Okay, I'll fail. Okay, and that's all I've got. It's nice to see everybody again. Be patient, there'll be a time when we can be non-virtual again.
Ending it, thanks, Bill, Nikki?
I don't, I don't really have anything at this time. There's nothing going on with the Central Square Board. So I really, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, and then Inspector Weber?
Well, first off, thank you so much for the warm welcome to those in the community and those on the board. This will be a grand learning experience, and I'm excited to start this journey with you. Just that, I'm sure you all know, the legislative session has begun, and this is a budget year. So I would encourage everyone to contact our great local representatives and let them know exactly how much you value the education in South St. Paul. And maybe we can do something like, oh, fix the formula and other items like that. And so that will be an issue that you will hear me return, return to time and time again. And anything we can do to encourage others in our community to do the same would be great. I also want to give a shout out, I mean, all of our teachers are doing such phenomenal work in this truly strange world we happen to find ourselves in. But I want to give a special shout out to the social studies teachers right now who truly are having to teach history on the fly. And I've heard just about some fantastic conversations that are happening in our classrooms around, you know, the world and nation events, and proof that a good civics education is good for everyone.
All right, well, thank you, Monica, and Inspector Rash?
Yeah, I'm just very excited to serve and thank everyone for that opportunity. But I also want to give a shout out to the teachers, coaches, activity, you know, folks who are working so hard to maintain some love, sense of community for other students in our district, thank you.
Thank you, John, Inspector Diaz?
Yes, thanks. I'm so glad that Monica and John mentioned the teachers and giving shout-outs. I was, my 11-year-old elementary student was on with the specialist this afternoon. And I, I want to give a shout out to the specialists, who already you have limited time with students. And then here we are, where you're having to do all of your lessons virtually, you're, you're recording them and then setting up some time to meet once a week. And I, as I was walking by today, I saw kids showing off all their skills. It was a, it was a music class, shout out to Mr. Rob, music class, and, and the kids were talking about all the skills that they've ever learned. Somebody was showing how they can go up on point. Mine had his bass behind him, and, and she saw, spotted it and said, is that a guitar? And he's like, no, it's a bass. And then he just boom, 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 boom. And, you know, they were, they were all showing their skills. And I just thought, look at this, look at this great community that she's building in such a short, short time. So shout out to the specialists. And yeah, the committee reports, tri-district meets tomorrow. Trying to think what else. That might be it, thanks.
All right, thank you, Linda. I also would like to thank Nikki, John, and Monica for stepping up. This is a big commitment to the community, and really, all of the community thanks you for, for making this commitment and then taking on the role that you are. There will be good times, and you've, as Monica said, you will learn a lot, and I'm sure you'll find it a very fruitful thing. But we want to thank you for, for making the effort and stepping up. And then also agree with all of the people that have, other board members that have talked about the commitment and the thanks that the teachers are deserving. It's just amazing what they are accomplishing. Whether you follow the, the district on any of the social media or just the, through the conversations on the streets, you, you can see that just the amazingly creative stuff that they're doing with the kids. It's just tremendous, they're adapting so much. You know, the conditions continually change, and they still are doing just amazing work. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all of that. And so that means we do not have a supplemental agenda for the evening. So there is no other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, January 11th, 2021 meeting. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Very good, discussion? If not, Lisa, for the last time tonight.
His second roll call?
Right. Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
And Chair Walker?
Yes.
At seven yays, at 7:25.
The motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Yep, goodnight, everyone.